This portion of the meeting to order. The school board will also have the regular meeting after this study session where we will establish our agenda for the remainder of the meeting. And we have our full board here. Would you like to do a roll call for city council?
Yeah, Deb, can you please call, roll?
Mayor Burtland.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Neese. Councilmember Bassett.
Here.
Councilmember Wendy Wyker.
Here.
Councilmember David Wiesentiner. And Councilmember Benson Wong.
Here.
Great, thank you. So with that, hopefully everybody has in front of them the agenda. We've got five different items, and I'm going to just speak out loud for the sake of the audience. We'll be starting off with the 2019 legislative priorities from the city. There will be a budget update coming from the school district. The city of Mercer Island will be providing some information overview of the 2019-2020 proposed budget. We'll then move to a facilities and transportation update coming from the school district, and then share a conversation about community efforts to address inclusiveness from all sides. So, so that's the agenda. So the first item on the list is actually the 2019 legislative priorities. And for that, I'm trying to think if we have Julie here?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, you're second on the end. Great.
I'm sorry, this wasn't originally part of your packet because the council just approved their legislative priorities this week. So in the revised packet, hard copy that Deb put together, you should have that in front of you. So, give you a minute to look at that. Obviously, improving I-90 access continues to be a priority for us. Providing local funding options, preserving and protecting regional parks, protecting the health of our community, protecting our seniors and veterans and disabled residents, and then preserving and protecting the environment. So typically, when the council approves the legislative priorities, it gives us a sense of greater efficiency. So when the session kicks off in January and the city's approached by our Association of Washington Cities to weigh in on things, it gives, if I know what the council's priorities are, we can, we can determine whether or not that is a bill that we would want to support or oppose. So it's very helpful. In fact, the council will be meeting with our 41st delegation just in a few weeks to share the priorities with the delegation and also give the delegation a chance to kind of tell us what they see ahead in the next session. So, but this is for you to obviously just have for your information and for your reference, and if you have any questions about those.
Yeah, just a couple of comments. This year, as you can, as you can tell, the council was a couple months ahead of schedule compared to where we've been historically, which I think is goodness because the point is for us to provide that guidance and the feedback to our representatives. Equally, I think we might have jumped ahead of you a little bit, and I know that typically you are putting together legislative priorities. We, at least last year and in past years, have tried to pick up and reinforce those which are coming from the districts so that we have some mutually supportive objectives there. So I think the extent to which we have approved our legislative priorities is not meant to say that we certainly, you know, would not want to hear from the district. We do want to hear from the district. We would want to have those conversations and understand how we can partner together to make sure, again, that your, your needs are met in the upcoming session, too. So I guess I have a question for the board, and that is, where are you in your priorities? And, or any early insights, or?
Thank you for asking. We have coordination with our WASDA, the Washington State School Directors Association, and they had a legislative assembly back in September, and our legislative rep is Director Jeanne Upton, and he attended that. And prior to that, we discussed some of the legislative priorities that WASDA lays out and what our priorities within that would be. Director Jeanne Upton was also recently at an area two, which is the Seattle area school districts, last Saturday. And there, they discussed what the region also has as a priority. And incidentally, also looked at the PTA priorities recently. And they're all fairly in alignment. Some of the highest priorities of both the state and our region is comprehensive school safety, gun violence prevention, social emotional learning. Those are the ones that I think definitely are, have some overlap with the city, and we appreciate the coordinated efforts that we've been doing for years on those, in those areas, but especially more recently with the number of shootings nationwide and the recent passage of the Washington State Initiative 1639 is very encouraging, I'm sure, to all of us here, as that affects our whole community and the broader state. We also have some that have to do with more school-specific things, like greater funding for special education needs, because that has been an area that has been historically underfunded. It's a federal mandate without federal, enough federal funding, and the state doesn't give us enough funding. We've had to supplement that with our local levies. And the legislature has increased our funding, as you're well aware, but there has been a noted lack of enough special ed funding with that latest round of legislation. And so our WASDA and our board and our region continue to advocate for better support to help our most vulnerable students with their great needs. Of course, we continue to work on social emotional learning and making that a priority in pretty much all of our discussions. And personally, it's with great disappointment that the, we didn't have a longer-term solution approved this week with Proposition 1, but I'm sure we'll have many more conversations ahead of us about how to work jointly towards the effort to keep our, the mental health of our students at the forefront of our priorities. So, we haven't published, or I'm not sure if we've planned to publish, a legislative priority list like this, but it's, it's kind of an ongoing thing. We also have a upcoming conference with our WASDA group next week, when, Thursday through Saturday, and so we'll be discussing it more there as well. That's the update. Would any other directors like to add anything?
I just might add in. So tonight, I received the full packet of the rollout of the Washington State School Directors Association legislative priorities for 2019, which is the sheet that we'll take along with WASBO and WASA to the Hill before their, their session begins. But in tonight's board packet for us, you'll see all of our listings for legislative priorities being rolled out. There's an additional sheet in there that shows all of our legislative positions, both standing and new positions. So all that information is in there for you. You can find it under, later in our agenda, under the legislative representative. And I do want to share something I'm really proud about. ISACWAS school board reached out to us after we passed Resolution 665, which had to do with school safety here in Mercer Island, and asked if we would be a signatory on comprehensive school safety, which was a brand-new legislative platform that went to WASDA this year. And I'm very pleased that across the state, we selected that as the number-one priority across the state and within our region. And so Mercer Island should be really proud of being signatories on that and having a hand in crafting that. So I wanted to share that.
I think that's great. Just one thing I'd call, Julie, I'm going to look at you, and if you can help me with the date check. I think it's, is it November 26th when we are actually having a reception? Well, we're meeting with the 41st delegation, but we're also having a reception for all the great service that Representative Cliburn has provided, so you're more than welcome. In fact, we would really love to have you there. Obviously, she's advocated not only for issues on behalf of the city, but certainly for our district as well. So I think we're having cake and punch if you need additional incentive.
Thank you. I realize I was remiss in a couple of things as well. One of them is inclusion and equity that we have been working on for several years with our diversity committees, and we've had some changes to the name in that, and we're moving more towards the term equity and inclusion over diversity, as we feel that's a more appropriate term for it. And many of the other school districts, of course, are working on that as well as a statewide thing. And we also, looking ahead to someday, improving or rebuilding or replacing our facilities, that's another high priority for us, looking ahead at potential funding models for raising money for bonds, but other matching grants as well for that. So, but that's a little further down the road.
Okay, well, great. So I think that is actually the first item. The next one, I know, is where we're going to start getting a little bit more into the nitty-gritty. We've got some budget information coming from both the districts and, of course, an update coming from the city. So, we have Ty. Okay.
Director Bergstrom is at the podium to walk us through our PowerPoint on the four-year budget.
Good to meet you, members of the board and members of city council. Thank you for meeting tonight. Tonight, we're bringing just an update. We've passed, the board has passed our 1819 operations budget and the newly legislated, legislatively required four-year budget. When we put the budget together, we had a bunch of assumptions based on what was going to happen with bargaining. Assumptions are assumptions, and they always change. Part of that, part of what happened is a lot of districts had to go out with these four-year budgets. There wasn't a whole lot of guidance about how to, from OSPI, about how to put these budgets together. It was your best guess. Go forth and do. And then after all the districts had settled their contracts, OSPI requested that districts come back and amend their four-year budgets to reflect what the results of their bargain agreements would look like in four years. Initially, when we had put together our budget for, prior to the completion of negotiations, our ending fund balance, our ending reserves equaled negative 1.2 million in the, in the fourth year. Thank you. Four years out, our deficit spending would put us into the hole. At this point, it was some pretty large assumptions that we were working with. Once we had finished our negotiations and settled our contract, we went back and took a look at what the results would be projected at forward for several years, as well as took a look at some of the other surrounding assumptions in terms of enrollment. Our enrollment is starting to flatten for the district, as well as districts region-wide have seen dec, not necessarily decreases in enrollment, but they're not making the projections that they made. So some districts are actually below where they were last year. Some are coming in between where they were and what they're projected to grow at. So very few districts have made their projections, which is worrisome for some of our districts since that drives our budget. So we flattened our enrollment, we flattened our staffing, and we made some, just some general assumptions about revenue flows and expenditures. And because we are in a deficit spending situation, we will be embarking on a review of how we are staffing the district, how we are approaching our programs, how we're approaching education, our general expenditures. And part of our assumptions is that we will, we're looking at tightening up those controls, tightening up our budget a little bit by about half a percent every year, which brings us out of the deficit spending trend. And at the end of the fourth year, we're projecting having an ending fund balance of just under $1 million. So the board passed this resolution in October, I believe it was the October 25th meeting. So this is our new four-year outlook. Any questions?
I have a question.
Yeah.
What is in your rainy day fund, and what's your percent?
So, we recently, so we've just closed our 1718 books due to some state funding that came in throughout the year, as well as some higher-than-project enrollment. We actually came in a little bit, well, significantly better than we thought. We're sitting about a 10% fund balance. We measure fund balance as a percentage of the dollars in the bank divided by the amount of money that we spent in the previous year. So it's the reserves over the last year's expenses.
Can I just clarify? The question was, do you think of rainy day fund, Julie, as being separate from fund balance? Do you understand what we mean by fund balance, or is that the same thing?
I was thinking of it separately.
Oh, we don't, we don't, we don't.
You don't do that.
We don't keep a separate rainy day.
That's just your fun balance.
It's just fun balance.
Okay. Got it. And you try to target 10% of expenditures, or 10%?
No, it was, that's, that's, that wasn't necessarily our target.
Oh.
That's just how it came out for 1718.
Okay.
Since we'd like to try to set a target, but because of how things have shaped out with the state budgets and with negotiations region-wide.
Yeah.
It's thrown everything into the blender. So we're starting to, this is our first attempt to really kind of take a look at what does the future hold for the district, and what is it going to all look like for districts region-wide?
And can I also add that this is a year where we are still getting our full levy funding, and we're getting the new state funding. And so this is a, a really nice year.
It's.
But the things are changing as you look forward at our fund balance, at it dropping, is because our larger levy amount that we are collecting is going to end after this year, and the new state model is coming into play, and our lower, local levy amount is coming in, and together, that is less than what we used to have, right?
Yeah.
But there was a nice overlap this year. Ralph, did you have it?
Yeah, I just, oh, sorry. I'd like to express appreciation to our administration for doing this, as well as the union negotiations, and appreciation both for the, both sides of negotiation teams. I think Mercer Island, we are in the positive four years out, and I think that's very important to our, to the board. There is a district that's significantly north of us that I think they started out with a $10 million fund balance, and four years out, they're $30 million in the hole. So that has been a little bit of a trend with respect to other school districts, with respect to the McCleary and the negotiations, et cetera. So I think the board's very pleased where we ended up. We, as our President Drinkwater did mention, we are beginning conversations about perhaps a master plan, not timing in terms of replacement of facilities, but trying to identify what facilities to be replaced first, like an itemized order. And perhaps Director Bergstrom could talk about the importance of a fund balance when going out next year or 30 years from now with the bond, a bond measure.
Just briefly, our fund balance is, it's not the single predictor of credit rating, but it is, when you look at the Moody's reports, it is the first-line item on there. They look very highly at what the district's financial management is, how tightly they control their financial management. Fund balance is also an indicator of what happens if, let's say, a levy doesn't get certified to the accounting assessors. Would there be sufficient reserves within the district's bank accounts to handle the debt service for that year if a levy doesn't get certified? So there, it is, it is a pretty strong indicator of what credit rating is. It's not the only indicator of credit rating, but it is, it is a, it is an item that they do rely on.
So I'm curious, did you have to cut any programs or limit staff, or did you?
So, we're.
Like, how did you?
So we're, we haven't, we haven't, we're only, this is, these are, these are first, first blush assumptions. This is us saying we need to cut program, not necessarily program, sorry. We're not reducing spending by a half percent every year. We don't know exactly what that looks like. We are looking at decreased enrollment, so we may not be adding as many teachers in the coming years. We may not, as teachers retire, we may not backfill. We may, we're looking at cheaper options for some of our services that we receive. Looking at special education, sometimes it's cheaper for us to hire specialists than it is to go out to some of the services that are provided for us. So there's a lot of different options that we have, but because this is brand-new to us in terms of four-year budgeting, we're just, we're essentially making a commitment that we're going to be reducing expenditures by half a percent every year. It's very fluid.
I think it's also important to recognize the increase in taxes that have come out because of McCleary. We also see people thinking schools are fully funded at this point, so we see reduced donations coming in for the schools' foundation, for the PTAs. We've also regularly paid stuff out of these, these donations, so PTAs have paid for para-pros, schools' foundations ostensibly has paid for teachers. Now, those salary, the donations have been flat for a number of years. You've seen the, you know, raise a million dollars. But clearly, wages have gone up in that amount of time, too. So I think the district also recognizes two things. One, donations are decreasing, not just flattening, but decreasing. Two, the long-term sustainability of staff through donations is not a viable place to be, and we're trying to pull that in, or understand how that gets pulled in. So kind of being more self-sufficient as we move forward in, in this new world of McCleary. And then I will also echo thanks to Ty. There is a lot of strings attached on how we use this budget and how we spend this budget. We try to provide a very rich educational system in terms of the number of teachers we have, the number of para-pros we have, the additional services we provide to our kids. And so it's a, it's a very fine juggling balance between what's basic education and the vast amount of dollars we have, and how Ty allocates that, how we allocate our levy dollars for things like seven-period days, extended education, extended education for our teachers as well, professional development, a lot of different balancing points around this. And that all comes out of, out of that. And I think a big thing to notice is our local levy was really the most flexible dollars we used to get. That's gone down from about 16% or, you know, 16-plus million dollars, $17 million, down to $10 million, $11 million. And so that has greatly constrained what we can do in a flexible way that's outside the norm of other districts. We, as a, as a district, we've also valued our teachers significantly, so when the state did not pay raises, we paid raises out of local levy dollars. And so, you know, we continue to give our teachers fair wages and fair pay. That type of flexibility is now being taken away from us with the way the levy has changed and the way funding needs to come out of basic education dollars and state-funded dollars. So lots of strings. I think Ty is working through this and helping, helping the board understand this and helping understand how we can continue to deliver the education programs that our families and our community expects and needs while still working, working within the law.
Question, and it ties back to the discussion on the legislative priorities. I mean, the sense I've gotten is that the budget work in the legislature is not done. So McCleary was considered, you know, covering some percentage of the issues. You've raised the issue of special ed, et cetera. Is there a sense that within your legislative priorities or other communities, be it on the east side or statewide, that this question of the levies may come up again, that there's still some room? Or is this overdone, hopeless, we're not, we're not going to bat on it?
Yeah, we don't think it's done. And we have our linkage session with the legislators in, at our December meeting, so we'll be talking to them there about what their proposals are, and we have a, it looks like a new state representative who is the Bellevue president, and she was very involved in WASDA, so, so we know we've got some expertise there, along with Tonnison and Lisa Wellman.
Also, just to, one other thing, I think, though, is it's important to recognize it's, it's an uphill battle. The Supreme Court has declared McCleary done from a basic education perspective, and that's, that's the challenge we face. Now, everybody, I think, in, in education knows basic education is not sufficient. It's not the expectations of our community. It's not the expectations of many other communities. And so that's, that's the new debate. And if you look at our legislative priorities, at least from the WASDA level, things like mental health counselors pop up on there. As President Drinkwater mentions, fully funding special education pops up on there. If you start thinking about STEM and other courses around that, that'll pop up, languages will pop up. There's, there's many other things, you know, seven-period day for flexibility for our kids in extracurricular activities and other sorts of things they take there that are not funded by the state and not considered part of basic education. So that's, that's where the debate has moved to, is that discussion on what is basic education and, you know, in a 21st century community.
Yes, and then if we're restricted with basic education, there's also discussions about how restrictive our new levy model is for raising money locally, and there are equity issues with that throughout the state. But we're also trying to advocate for maintaining what, what we have been able to do here on Mercer Island, so it's a really tricky balancing act. Thanks for your additional input there, Director DeZusa. Yes, Brian?
I'm sorry, and I wanted to kind of maybe cue up Ty for something to, to discuss on the horizon. But yeah, we've, in attending the legislative assembly this last month, tax reform, school funding models were all a major part of conversation at every table I sat at, and so how we're going to accomplish that. So I encourage everyone to do a little bit of research, go to OSPI, and look up the prototype school funding formula. It's a scalable formula and basically says X number of kids equals X amount of dollars, and they break it down to .08 counselors and one administrator and so many teachers. That's what we're funded on, and then that's per full-time enrolled student is how that's broken out. So it's, it's pretty strict. So we lose that flexibility in our local levy dollars. But on the horizon, all of our benefits are now moving in the next couple of years to the state board. And this is going to throw some really interesting hitches into our funding, so maybe if you have a chance to talk about that briefly, I thought I'd throw that out there, because that's the next big hurdle we have as a district.
Councilmember Bassett, is that okay?
Yeah, of course.
Okay. So the state, as part of the McCleary solution, the state decided to create the School Employees' Benefit Board, essentially taking all of our locally-controlled benefits and moving it under the statewide board, similar to the Public Employees' Benefit Board. And they're changing how we will be funded and how the board works in terms of funding the pool for the employees. Currently, we are funded on an FTE, full-time equivalency basis, for staff, and we pay a prorated amount for staff. So if you work half-time, you get half the allowance for benefits. Under SEB, the School Employee Benefit Board, we will be funded on an FTE basis, but we will have to pay the pool on a headcount basis, and it will be the full cost to the employee irregardless of they work half-time or full-time, irregardless of they choose to accept the benefits or not. irregardless if they choose to accept the benefits or not, and if we anticipate that they work at least half the year. So it's really exciting. Some districts are anticipating additional costs of anywhere from a million to $2 million. We are somewhere in the three-quarters to a million dollar range. The cost of the pool has not been established. They will not establish the cost of the pool per employee and allocation per employee until the governor's budget comes out in December. The board, SEB, has a tentative agreement with the Coalition of Unions that represent the teachers and the classified staff. That will go before the legislature in this session. They can accept or reject. And they will also establish how much the pool will be, districts will be allocated for benefits for the pool. So we're not going to really know the true cost of the pool until, I would probably say, August. And then the pool begins, open enrollment begins in November, I believe it's November, and then we start January 1, 2020.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. This is going back a couple steps to comments that Dave made and the page you have in your agenda bill that talks about assumptions around donations and gifts. You mentioned that the donations have been flat for some time and that didn't particularly surprise me, but it did catch my eye and surprised me that you were estimating a decline of something like 60% in those from 1.2 million to 500,000 for the coming years. Is that reflecting some real data? Because it's pretty eye-popping, or is that just a very conservative estimate?
It's a, it's a fairly conservative estimate, but it also reflects some of the trends that we've noticed. So in the fall, the foundation usually brings in about close to 500,000. And from the call-a-thon, the breakfast usually brings in somewhere around another 600 to 700,000. PTAs usually raise somewhere around 500,000. So between those two groups, reducing each by about $250,000 is a fairly strongly conservative estimate, but also it reflects our desire to get away from having the PTAs and the foundation provide money for staffing. It's not sustainable. The PTAs are struggling every year and every year. It gets harder and harder for them to struggle to raise the funding, to staff the positions that they have. And it's, it's not fair to the employees that they are, you know, essentially year to year. So we're trying to reduce our reliance and also recognize the fact that collections, donations are getting harder to come by. There's, I think there's a lot of donation fatigue, there's a lot of tax fatigue. And it, it's our, I mean, we're trying to show that we're recognizing that and trying to maybe necessarily take, not necessarily take some pressure off the community, but we also don't want to build in assumptions into the future that we'll still be relying on these really incredible donations when they may not come in, so.
And part of what I was doing is trying to, I'm trying to think, what are the implications for the rest of the community, YFS, other things that people might give to if, if this is an accurate reflection of, you know, the public's appetite for giving at this point?
But to clarify, I heard what Dave said, part of the, the appetite for giving is because of McCleary, which may or may not then impact YFS, et cetera. But I guess this is one of those things where time will tell.
I, I was just going to follow up. I also had the same question, or at least it was, it was eye-popping. So, you know, we just recently had the phone-a-thon, and I'm just curious whether or not, do you have any idea what the numbers were raised by the foundation? And whether or not that, how does that relate to your assumptions in terms of what you expect?
So I did just, we had a meeting this morning, the Schools Foundation, and they did meet their, their target for phone-a-thon. This is, the assumptions certainly are, are conservative and are in no way reflective of donations that occurred last year or that may even occur this year. Our stronger concern is the sustainability with the increased costs that happen every single year for personnel. And when you're relying on one-time dollars to continue to increase, that becomes the problematic piece. So if it's one-time dollars and we're saying we're going to fund this specific position, the same amount of dollars the next year aren't going to fund that equivalency anymore. So that's part of the concern as well. And we've seen sort of, I hate to call it sticker shock, but we've heard that from our fundraising groups when they're saying, well, you know, we used to be able to fund three and a half positions. Well, now in dollars, there's no way that that's three and a half positions just because of the increased cost of personnel.
All right, if, I'm just looking at the time and we are just digging deep into item two and appreciate all of the comments and, and helpful questions and clarifications. Are we okay to move on to the next one? Okay. So item three, proposed budget for the city.
Julie?
Yes, and I, I will just give you a very high-level overview. So in mid-October, I presented a balanced budget to the city council for their consideration, and they are going through that process now of evaluating the proposed budget. And one of the things that they really made clear on, on our budget assumptions is assuming a no-levy assumption. So the budget, of course, assumes no levy. You might recall, back in July, we had an outside consultant evaluate our forecasting assumptions. And one of the things that he actually noted is our forecasts lacked a recession. So we didn't forecast a recession into our six-year forecast. And so I think, and the council's all wanting to be more prudent with that. The other piece of that is the consultant also recommended that a rainy day fund should be roughly 15% to 17% of your expenditures. We're about 10%. So in light of the fact that we didn't forecast a recession, in light of the, the best practice, the council also directed me to find some monies to build up a little more money into that rainy day fund. So now we're about 12.5%. So, so this budget does include that. And unfortunately, this budget also includes, just like you're projecting, about $2 million of deficit spending. So we're spending down some one-time monies. Over the last, oh gosh, four or five years, the city has been fortunate to get all of those construction sales dollars. But we, we don't anticipate that will continue going forward. So we're able to bridge our budget, again, using the about $2 million of one-time money. In addition, the budget also includes about 1.2 million in reductions. So again, I'm trying to, and, and also target those reductions in a way that really does still, in our best approach of still providing some minimal services and not really eliminating a wholesale elimination of services and programs. So that's what's presented to the council. They are to give me final direction in a couple of weeks, November 20th. And, and they are due to adopt that budget on December 4th. So that's kind of the high-level overview. And just like you, we are very much experiencing rising costs, a lot of which are, you know, come down from the legislature, those unfunded mandates. And so that's having an impact, of course, on our personnel projections. So anyway, that's kind of it in high level. And if you have any questions for me, happy to answer them, if I can.
Okay. Well, I mean, obviously, the council will be going through the budget over the next couple of sessions. So the extent to which you do have questions that come up, you know, please do reach out to us. Do come to the meetings, do share via email, et cetera.
And Mayor, if I may add, as the council has also directed the staff to work with a consultant that we brought in for the forecasting review, for us to develop a fiscal sustainability plan. So we'll kick that off in December. And then really, I anticipate we'll work on that with the council probably over the first quarter of next year. And that's another way for us to, again, evaluate how we can try to really sustain our services. We are projecting quite, quite significant deficits, starting, well, starting now, actually. But the fiscal cliff really hits us in 2021 with over $4 million and then $5 million after. So we've got to, we really need, you know, to be responsible and try to get ahead of what's coming. Yeah.
Thank you. I also wanted to express some appreciation for a couple of things. And one of them is the assurance that our funding for the school counselors will make it through June of 2019, which is the end of our school year coming up. Also, the traffic improvements at 86th and 40th.
And we are going to do a ribbon-cutting, and you have to come.
Oh, that would be great. I just love seeing all those sidewalks.
Isn't it?
And it just, it took a long time, but it feels really good driving through there now. And I just wanted to say thank you because that, that just looks like it's such an improvement over where, where we were a few years ago, especially.
Thank you.
Actually, I would say it took decades. And also, you know, a call-out to, to the team at the city because there was a $500,000 grant.
Thank you for mentioning that.
That was applied for and awarded that actually made the extension of that possible. So that, I think, was a, a huge, you know, asset brought forward to the city. So with that, I think we're turning it back over to you to talk about facilities and transportation update.
Good evening. We'll start with the capital projects update and just briefly go over some of the projects that we've been working on over the last year. We've made some changes to elementary front offices. We made the secure entries last year. Found out that the ergonomics of some of that didn't quite work, so we made some office changes. They look fantastic. Merry Wait Pool. We are continuing to work with McKinstry to define a scope of work for the pool in terms of energy efficiency and heating, the pool, filters for the pool, electrical work, the storefront of the pool to make it a little bit more energy efficient as well as look a little nicer. So we're still in the process of defining what some of these projects will be and what they cost for the district.
With regard to the solar panel possibility, there's an active group on Mercer Island, 100% MI, that Bruce is connected to that would really be interested in that. And we could maybe solicit some support for some funding if we're sure.
That would be awesome. Okay, we will.
But as long as we're going there, I, I'll also, I know, I'm sure you're on top of this, but I know study, information I've seen in the past has said, when you want hot water, it's a lot easier to get hot water than to go to electricity first and then get to hot water. And so I would think that there's the possibility of doing some sort of a solar thermal heating system on the roof that, that might have good payback associated with it. So, but I, I'm sure your consultants are well on top of that.
Yeah. Yeah, we've, we've explored a lot of solar options for Merry Wait Pool. As part of the, I mean, in terms of heating the pool, heating the facility, powering it. So we're very interested in finding new solar applications for the pool. And we're, we'll definitely reach back out to the council and to Councilman Bassett.
Is Brandy leading the project?
She is.
Amen, thank you.
Brian?
And if I could just weigh in, we're getting great results from the, the solar work that went on with the middle school and that renovation. Great information coming back from that on cost savings. And we just received, it was an award for that, wasn't it?
The Islander Middle School is designated now as a green school because of the energy efficiency we were able to achieve in the new building that was put in there. It's King County Green School.
Over the summer, you may have noticed that the high school got a new roof. It looks fantastic. I am completely blanking on the name of the vendor. Garland, thank you. Garland did a fantastic job of terms of coming in on time and on budget and doing a fantastic job of, of doing the roof. It is a huge project, and we received minimal complaints from the neighbors in terms of disruption and noise. So they did great work. Also, over the summer, we did the stadium lights. As many of you have probably seen, the stadium lights look fantastic. There's, we've actually had to add more lights and request more lights being added outside the, in the parking lot and on the street because there is so little bleed off from the lights, that people were finding it to be a little hazardous. But it's, it looks absolutely great. So we've made some modifications to the bus lot to accommodate a wider opening for the bus lot and some reworking on, I believe it was the fire plugs. We also repaved it, or we resurfaced, resealed, and repainted all the stripes. We are now able to get a couple more buses into the, into the spots, into the parking lot. The big project coming up, besides the pool, we are putting in a secure entry at the high school. We'll be adding a vestibule just outside the main office. We will be locking the front doors during school hours, and all visitors and students will be funneled into this entry and will be buzzed into the high school. We're currently in the design review process, almost. We're almost to the design review. We're working with the planning department and preparing for the design review. And we anticipate work will start sometime in the spring. And then this is just some renderings of what the, the entry will look like. We're working with Malum. They've done a fantastic job of, of putting it together. On the admin building, we're adding double set of doors to help increase our energy efficiency, get a little less heat bleed from the front. And that's that for capital project updates.
Thank you very much, Ty. Quick question. So you had your capital levy, when and how much time do you have to go in? This is a couple more years?
So it's, this was the 2016 Capital Projects and Technology Levy. And I think we were just talking about year three's projects. And I was just going to mention that, just as a reminder to everybody out there in TV land, that this is a result of that, that levy that was passed and appreciation to the taxpayers. And there is that chart here that shows, I think this is essentially the, kind of a rough draft guesstimate of what it is. But as I think Dean Mack used to say, that maybe 85% gets accomplished what's listed there because things pop up. And an appreciation to the administration and to the maintenance for prioritizing the vestib, security vestibules at all the elementary schools and the high school because of unfortunate events. That has been prioritized and that was not anticipated. So not everything necessarily listed will be funded, but hopefully as much as possible.
Thanks.
Okay, I think, oh, Bruce.
I hesitate to even say anything, but it, I feel like an old guy, and I think you probably all do too, in the sense that we, we grew up in a simpler time when you didn't need to have vestibules on schools. And it just seems like such a shame, not for a second, saying you don't need to do it and it shouldn't be a priority, but it just seems like at the same time such a bummer that that's the world we live in and that you, you do have to do it. Completely unnecessary commentary there.
And I, I, I think a number of us feel the same way and it's, it's a very sad statement of where we are. I think a number of people that came maybe eighteen months ago asking for this were citing their own measures that are at their employment offices that they buzz in and stuff and saying, if that's the way it is when I go to work, why isn't it the way that my children, the most, um, vulnerable people are? And that kind of resonated with me. I mean, everything resonates differently with other people, but I agree. It is a sad state of society right now.
Okay, um, so the next and actually the, the final item on the list right now is community efforts to address inclusiveness. And this is an item that I think I'm handing over to both Julie and to Donna for some introduction about some work that's been going on between the city and the district.
Why don't you talk about your effort first? Because you've been doing this a while.
Mercer Island School District has been engaged in, um, work around, um, diversity and equity and inclusion since twenty fourteen-ish in my recollection of, of history. The board adopted the, uh, first iteration of the diversity and equity policy in twenty fifteen. As a result of that work, there has been a, a diversity advisory for all of the years. And there is also, as Tracy mentioned earlier, site advisories that work with the, um, as leaders at the sites to impact our students when it comes to working around, um, the concepts of equity and inclusion and all of the ramifications of that. So we have been engaged in the work. We, um, have kind of switched our dialogue a little bit to really encompass equity and inclusion and how does that impact our students? And I do recall a conversation when I first, um, arrived on Mercer Island and having the discussion about diversity and equity with Julie in particular and, and, um, saying to her, you know, the schools can't do this by them, by themselves. We, um, would really appreciate any community support that can be garnered, um, as we have discussions because we, we want to directly impact students in the classroom, but, um, every single one of our treasured students comes with a family and adults and culture and traditions within those family. And, um, as, as hard as we work as, um, educating our students and by virtue of that, their families, we all live together in the community. So how do we, um, how do we translate that in a broader sense?
Thank you. Yeah, one of the things that, um, our council did, was it November, November twenty sixteen?
The, the statement?
Yeah. So it really, I think, um, the council, um, really wanted to express values of, of course, welcoming, inclusive community, um, you know, civil discourse. And so really using that as the foundation, um, the, the council has also a, um, I guess it's an ad hoc committee. Wendy Benson and Debbie serve on that. And, um, and really, I think it started by really evaluating, well, how are we doing as an organization in reflecting our community? So I know the staff did some work before I, I came aboard in evaluating that. And I think now we're kind of at a place where, um, since brought in Cindy Goodwin, um, all the work that her team has done with regard to, um, really community norming. And I know she and Fred have talked because, um, again, we think there is a really great potential partnership here. And they have met, um, and talked to a potential trainer. So we're really in a very initial conversation. And I think the idea here is if we all can use the common language, common understanding, we all really benefit. And I think, um, again, I'm going to really rely on Cindy. I'm going to rely on Chief, um, Holmes as well. They, he's done a ton of work in this area as well, but it's really an initial, let's explore, let's keep talking, and then let's see where it might be able to go.
Thank you both. And I think one of the things I want the public to understand is that this work we could do individually, but we really see that there's a synergy there mostly because we share the same population, but also because I think it will save us both money
Yes.
by partnering on this and that that is a really practical standpoint of it. But I also just think it's really, um, more effective, um, as you were describing. So, thank you very much. And we can continue to talk a little bit about this, but I also just wanted to point out that we had one other item that we haven't mentioned at all. That was an attachment of the student parking survey results. Was that going to be included at some point?
I, I think it's, it's important to call out this work that, that we're embarking on. And there's still a great deal of work to be done in terms of scoping what it is and what it looks like. But the essence of it is that I think we would all agree that we want to be not only inclusive, but we want to be having open dialogues across our different, um, communities, even within the island about what it means to be inclusive and what it means to pursue equity, et cetera. And I think given events, you know, as they've taken place over the last couple of years, the city has issued its proclamation in November sixteen. Sadly, again, we had to put out a statement last August, and I believe it was last week, maybe two weeks ago in response to Pittsburgh. So this is the time. And I do feel, um, that it is quite important for us to start to articulate what those messages are and to create a set of tools and a common dialogue that we can share going forward. So, um, I hope as, as the leaderships of the respective organizations start to come together and understand exactly what that means, that we again, as a collective team and leadership within this community can be supportive.
Thank you.
Uh, if I could tag on, so I had the great pleasure of working with Equity Caucus, uh, with WASDA while I was at the Legislative Assembly. So I want to bring back just a small challenge with that equity lens. While I totally know what's meant by addressing inclusiveness, I want to point out that being inclusive is a state of being. It's making sure that there are seats available at your table and your doors are open. The real work is engagement of recognizing who's not at the table, asking yourself why they're not at the table and what you could do better to engage those people to come in and join that conversation. So that's my challenge from the Equity Caucus, uh, to all of us as we do this work. And then also to mention that I'm going to be headed to Washington DC in January for the Equity Symposium through the National School Boards Association as loyal as the Advocacy Institute. So I'm really excited to be bringing back tools for our tool belt to share, uh, with the city and, uh, everyone here in the district from that.
Just to quickly address the other two attachments, we, um, did attach our facilities, um, study and survey update that was presented to the board, um, back in early October. This is really just a review of our infrastructure and how it's aging and what are the, what are the bright spots and what are some of the, the blind spots within our facilities that we need to be paying attention to? And, and the board has also been having ongoing conversations about, uh, next steps in long-range planning for a facilities, um, master planning kind of, uh, process. The other attachment is directly related to our transportation plan that we work in cooperation and collaboration with the city on. And you might recollect that last spring, a, um, student petition was presented to the, um, city council as a request to, um, add additional high school parking. So the district in anticipation of our transportation plan, um, surveyed certainly our students, but also the residents in the surrounding area of the high school. And so the results of that survey are here for you, but will be part that in parcel, it embedded in the transportation plan when we present that as we do every year, um, department to department, um, school board to city.
Thank you. Any, uh, final questions or comments about the agenda items? Okay. Thank you all for being here. Uh, we really appreciate, uh, this event, to get together and confer on our common issues and on our separate issues as well and really get updated about what each, um, governing body is doing. So, um, appreciate everybody's participation tonight.
Great. I guess with that, the, the city council portion is adjourned and, uh, wish you an effective evening.
Thank you. And our, our school board meeting, um, will be in a brief recess and we will, uh, start again at about six o'clock and we'll have public input-